Okay, it's setting up here, just a minute. Okay, it's setting up here, just a minute.
Okay, Deb, we're ready.
Okay. Thank you very much for your patience. We had a slight delay just starting this meeting and getting the Zoom set up. So we have just patiently waited to begin. I will start by calling this meeting to order. Gail, are you able to do a roll call?
I can do that. Tyler?
Here.
Deb?
Yes.
Don?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Okay, we will, and we also have from Iowa Association of School Boards, we have, help me pronounce your name, I'm sorry.
Siobhan.
Siobhan Schneider. And Lindsay Beecher is in attendance as well, and Gail Hopkins. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, for the work session.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda is approved. I think I would like to, if possible, turn this over. This is a, we are having a review of the Iowa Open Meetings laws, rules, and how it applies to our meetings here at Gilbert. And Siobhan has been kind enough to put together some presentation and some materials for us. And I believe you're gonna go through those and then potentially allow time for questions or anything like that if we have them.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so at this point, maybe I'll just turn it over to you and we can get started.
Great, thanks so much, Deb. I'm going to, give me just a moment here, folks, I'm gonna share my screen. And hopefully this shows up correctly. So you should see the opening slide is the IASB logo. Perfect. So, um, welcome, everybody, and thank you so much for inviting me to this meeting. I really appreciate it. So, my name is Siobhan Schneider, and I'm the Director of Policy and Legal Services for Iowa Association of School Boards. And I am a licensed attorney in Iowa, and I was in private practice for about 10 years before switching over to working for IASB. And it is so much more fun to work with school board members. So I'm staying. One of the great things I get to do is host workshops like this from time to time when boards invite me over. So I really appreciate you guys reaching out for some additional discussion about the Open Meetings law. But I am not on an island over at IASB. My whole team, the Policy Legal Services team at IASB, is comprised of myself and our HR Services Director, Eric Howard, and our Policy and HR Services Specialist, Marty Brightman. And I put their contact information up here as well as mine, so that if you guys have questions going forward or in the future, you can always feel free to give us a call or send us an email and touch base with us, because we really are a resource for our members, and we want to help you guys out and answer questions. So never be shy about asking questions. And with that being said, I really hope today during this presentation that you guys will stop me and ask questions. If I gloss over something really fast and you didn't quite catch it, or you're not sure what I meant by this, or you have additional questions, okay? So what I want to do is, we'll have some time where I'm going to talk at you and give you a little bit of information and present some stuff to you. And again, please pepper me with questions as we go along. And then we will go through, as a group, a couple of examples, and we can talk about the answers, and then we'll get to some scenarios which are a little bit more involved. And the purpose of this is not for everybody to be on the exact same page, oh yeah, the answer is yes, or, you know, the answer is no. It's actually to evoke some discussion, because while we're talking about these, about the rules and about the Open Meetings law, sometimes, you know, when you discuss it in theory, it seems really straightforward. But when we put it into practice, it's messy. Life is messy. There's a lot of gray area. So this should be a good interactive discussion, and it's okay if you don't share the same views as the rest of your board members while we're talking about it, because we're gonna work through them, okay? So with that said, we're gonna cover just a couple areas tonight: big concept, open meetings, and also advanced notice. Okay, and this is really the heart and soul of Chapter 21 of the Iowa Code. So Chapter 21 is half of our state's government and the sunshine laws. And the purpose of these government and the sunshine laws, they're a construct of the 1960s, 1970s on a federal level, when a lot of the population said, okay, we're paying taxes into our state and local and federal governments, and we want to know what decisions are being made, but we also want to understand how those decisions are being made. So we want to have access to be able to understand it. So these sunshine laws were created to be able to share that information with the public. And one of those laws in the state of Iowa is Chapter 21, our Open Meetings law. And the other one is Chapter 22, our Public Records law. I think you guys pretty well know this by now. You're probably pretty experienced with what constitutes a meeting, but it's a gathering, either in person or electronically, of a majority of your members, so at least three of you, where there is deliberation, which means basically just discussion or action on any matter that's within the scope of your policymaking duties, okay? So it does have to compromise your policymaking duties when you, in order to constitute a meeting. So, does your public have an absolute right to participate in your meetings? The short answer is no. The public really doesn't have a right to interact with the board meeting taking place, because it's your meeting. It's a meeting of the board, and you guys are, you know, publicly elected unpaid volunteers who are running a school district. You need to be able to come in and efficiently do the work of your district, the governance work. And in order to do that, we gotta honor your time. So your board meeting is your board meeting. With that being said, a lot of boards do choose to set aside some time during their regular meetings to host a public forum. And they'll usually put some reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner. So they might say, you know, speakers are limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes tops, and we'll take as many people as we can during that time period. And there's a sign-in sheet, something along those lines. And again, that's just an example. Boards across the state do it slightly differently. But they can hold that public forum, because it gives you an opportunity to hear from your community and to hear their concerns and be more involved and in touch with what is on their minds. So, we talked about an open meeting, okay, and it really is pretty broad. It encompasses quite a lot. There are exceptions to the Open Meetings law. There's two of them. One is exempt meetings, and the other one is a closed session. So first, I want to talk about exempt meetings, because sometimes exempt meetings and closed sessions can get, the terms can get a little interchangeable, or sometimes I've seen districts mistakenly use one for the other. So I want to try and make them a little more delineated in your minds tonight. An exempt meeting is something that is not subject to the Open Meetings law. It doesn't require notice with an agenda. No minutes have to be taken. There are not other requirements under Chapter 21 for an exempt meeting. These are very, very limited in the types of subjects that qualify for an exempt meeting. Some might be a couple of limited private hearings related to an employee termination. Okay, well, that kind of makes sense. You know, when you're talking about someone's personnel file, then they should have some privacy rights. And the other one would be just, excuse me, discussing strategy sessions for employees that are either covered by collective bargaining or for employees that are not. And so when I say strategy sessions, I'm talking about the district says, okay, you know, we've looked at all of our finances, and here's our pool of resources where we can pull from to be able to offer benefits to our employees this year. Let's start our opening bid at this, and let's be willing to concede on this in order to get that. That's, that strategy session, that can be done in an exempt meeting. But it wouldn't be specific to one employee generally. So it wouldn't be like, okay, you know, our, you know, the third grade, the third grade music teacher is saying that they would like a raise of blah, you know, this, this, that, or the other, the following terms. No, that's specific to one employee. These exempt meetings should be for the large group of employees, okay? So I get asked this question somewhat regularly. Can you go into an exempt meeting during your open meeting? And this is again where I think conceptually exempt meetings and closed sessions can sometimes get mixed up in people's minds. The short answer is really, you shouldn't, because an exempt meeting is something that exists entirely outside of Chapter 21. So you don't want to bring it into an open meeting, okay? So your best practice would be to reserve the exempt meeting, since it's its own entire standalone meeting, for taking place maybe after an open meeting has adjourned or before an open meeting starts. And again, you don't have to provide notice of an exempt meeting, but there could be some really good considerations for why you would want to notify your public that an exempt meeting is gonna take place, just in order of, you know, in order to promote transparency, to say, hey, just to let you know, we're gonna cover these topics, they're gonna be exempt. But you just want to make sure that you're very clear about the fact that if you're holding an exempt meeting after your open meeting has concluded, you're adjourning first, okay? That's, that's really quite important. And before I move on to closed sessions, does anyone have questions about exempt meetings? Not hearing any, but if you think of any, feel free to speak up, okay? So closed sessions, these are, these closed sessions actually take place within a board meeting, within an open meeting. So in this situation, you're going to convene your board meeting, you're going to go through your regular opening process, and then you would hold a vote to decide whether or not you can go into closed session. And then you would have your closed session and reconvene back in the open. And if there's any action item from the closed session, that would take place in the open, okay? But it's one small piece of a larger open meeting, okay? So that's worthwhile to keep in mind. Closed sessions, there are 12 bases for going into a closed session. These can include things like evaluating your superintendent, or if you wanted to purchase, if the district wanted to purchase or sell some real estate, and you wanted to discuss what, what offer you were gonna make, or what offer you would be willing to accept. If you did that in an open session, it would probably affect the purchase price. So that's something that you can do in closed session, so that it doesn't impact, negatively impact the purchase price for the district, okay? So there are specific exceptions for why you can go into closed session, and you want to make sure that you're following those. And those are housed, the 12, the 12 reasons are housed in Chapter 21, subsection 5 of the Iowa Code. And remember, keep in mind that the very start of Chapter 21, the law says that any ambiguity should be construed in favor of openness. So if you're not sure that's something kind, maybe it fits into a closed session, but maybe it doesn't, you should call and ask your legal counsel, or give me a ring. I'm happy to answer questions. Always happy to answer questions for my members, because when in doubt, you should err on the side of openness. So we talked about, there are 12 reasons. Primarily, the most, the more common reasons that you guys will be utilizing closed sessions is for stuff that intuitively makes sense, okay? We want to be able to protect the privacy of students. So if we're discussing something that relates to student records, that would probably be a closed session, okay? We want to be able to protect our employees' privacy for the same reason. So if it affects an employee's personnel file, that might be a closed session. We want to make sure that we have some confidentiality when we have to discuss matters that we think might go into litigation with our attorney, so that we can maintain that confidentiality. With that being said, you still have to keep in mind, though, that even if the board is going into closed session, you have to give proper notice, and you have to take detailed minutes and have an audio recording for the closed session. And that audio recording and the minutes are sealed by your board secretary or whomever the board designates to do that. And they're kept for a year. One exception I will tell you about, though, since I'm thinking about it, we talked about real estate transactions. When the board can use a closed session to be able to discuss a counteroffer or accepting an offer, once that real estate transaction is completed and opening those records wouldn't affect the purchase price, then they transition to open, okay? They're no longer sealed. So, and again, that makes sense, because you're just saying, okay, it's not gonna affect the purchase price anymore. Now we want it to be, to be open and transparent. This is, oh, Deb, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question. So the emergency meetings kind of, I don't know if it's a clause or whatever, that the governor, that we are kind of allowed to, to use just during this COVID situation?
Yeah.
Only applies to open or open and closed, any kind?
So it, yep, because a closed session is part of an open meeting, it would apply to that as well.
The closed session can be emergency as well. I'm not sure why I asked that, but just a question, okay?
It can be, and there, I'm, I'm, you know, again, it, this is where things are kind of, you know, life is messier than what we can read in, in the Iowa Code. So I'm not, I can't think of an example right off the top of my head of why you would need an emergency closed session, but yes, there are situations where that occurs, and they are very valid.
Okay.
And, um, safety plans for your district, this is kind of a big one, because safety plans, you know, we have requirements from the Iowa Legislature that were just passed within the last couple of years, that all districts have to have emergency operations plans in place. And it's for a variety of things, natural disasters, but also active shooter drills, things like that, okay? These plans are actually required by the Iowa Legislature to be kept confidential. So they would be, they're actually a record that has to be kept confidential under Iowa law. And because of that, anytime that your board has to review or update or discuss your safety plan, your emergency operations plan, that, that would qualify as a closed session. And I just put it in there separate, because that would be the newest change or addition to the closed session exemptions that I could think of off the top of my head. So just be aware of that one. You want to make sure that that's kept confidential. And again, it makes sense. If you publicly post how your children in your school buildings are going to shelter in place, or how they're going to evacuate in the event of, you know, a violent episode, then that, that information shouldn't be made public. So, with that being said, when do we post meeting agendas? You have to have at least 24 hours' notice under the Iowa Code. And there are exceptions to the rule, Deb, you kind of touched on this, the idea of an emergency meeting, when you, when you post a agenda notice with less than 24 hours. Yes, that can absolutely happen. It should be a very rare situation where posting with 24 hours' notice is impossible or impractical. You have to have good cause for it. And then you have to state it in the minutes, what the basis for the, holding the emergency meeting is. And I will tell you that prior to the pandemic, this was really pretty rarely utilized by districts. It just wasn't, it didn't come up that often. And then unfortunately, you know, because of the pandemic, we've actually seen quite a huge uptick in emergency meetings, because decisions have to be made quickly. Even now, with return-to-learn plans in place, some boards will choose to utilize, so the legislature gave boards, with Senate File 2310, that was passed in the spring, they gave boards the option to either retain the ability to close a school building or close a district or temporarily because of the pandemic, or to give that, that authority to the superintendent to temporarily close. So districts got to choose. And if a board wanted to retain that authority, then they're probably gonna have to use an emergency meeting at some point, because, you know, we hope not, but at some point, probably there's gonna be a day where a threshold is met, and you have enough absenteeism or enough positive cases where you're gonna have to make a quick decision on whether or not to close a building or close, close the district temporarily and switch to remote learning, okay? So, yep, this, this one, normally in the past, I could say, oh, you're, you're rarely gonna ever use it. Right now, we have to be somewhat nimble.
Yeah.
So posting the agenda, agendas should be posted in a place where the public is likely to see it. This can be doors and bulletin boards and things like that, but it should be accessible from the exterior of your building, just so that if the building is closed, it can still be read. A lot of districts choose to post their agenda on their website, which I think is a great addition, because then it's really easy to access for your public. Doing that by itself isn't sufficient. And then, of course, if members of the media request the agenda, then you have to, then you have to email that to them. And how much information should be included on agendas? So there's actually not a lot of guidance in the Iowa Code for this, okay? This is basics. You need to have the date, time, place, and an idea of what topics are gonna be covered at that meeting, okay? It's not enough to just say old business or new business. If you list, because you want the, any member of the public to be able to read it and understand, okay, what it's going to be. So, for instance, let's say I, you know, on my agenda, I drafted, and I listed new business, that really doesn't tell you how much or what's going to be discussed, but if I listed review of the school lunch program, well, that gives you a better idea of what topics are gonna be discussed on the agenda. With that said, you want to have enough information on there to understand the topic, but not so much that you guys pigeonhole yourselves into only one thing. So I could say the review of the school lunch program, but what I would, what I would not want to do is say, like approval of raising school lunch milk prices by five cents. Because what if the board ultimately decides that five cents isn't enough, or five cents is too much, and you want to change that amount, okay? Does that kind of make sense? So, really, the standard here is, oh, yep, Tyler, did you have a question?
I do. Maybe you'll get to it, but, so how, I mean, how specific do we need to be? I know there's been times over the last couple of years where maybe an agenda item was listed as discussion, and then when we got there, we wanted to take action, but we decided we couldn't, because it wasn't listed that way. I mean, can you talk a little bit about that, or maybe you're gonna talk to that in subsequent slides?
No, I can absolutely talk about it. So, yeah, I would say it's good, it's ideal to build yourselves a little bit of flexibility. And it's never gonna hurt you to put into something that, and again, it depends on how you guys like to structure your agendas, but you could put discussion and possible action on. And then it leaves you an opening to, you're saying, okay, it's possible that we're gonna take action on this tonight. So again, it's surprising your public, because really what we're looking for is not so much jargon or so much, you know, like a bunch of acronyms, okay, that people don't necessarily understand. Acronyms are really tough, because unless somebody is really working in the school district on a regular basis, they may not understand what that means. But giving yourselves a little flexibility to say discussion and possible action allows you the room to be able to do what you need to do at that meeting efficiently.
Yeah, that makes sense. If there's nothing in the agenda, then really, you, could you bring it up for discussion, but then you would avoid doing action, or what if something, for whatever reason, didn't make the agenda?
So if you have an item that comes up, and it didn't, didn't post to the agenda in time, because, you know, it's more recent or something like that, unless that item is an actual emergency, it should wait until the next meeting. And so when I am talking conceptually about emergencies, the way I like to say it is, if making a decision on that item in 23 hours or less will change the outcome versus waiting 25 hours, then it's an emergency. If it will not change the outcome, it's probably not an emergency.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Deb?
Yeah, so along those lines, that's the same criteria for just a general emergency meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Like, and then, so kind of along Tyler's line, in this situation now, and I'm asking again about emergency meetings, which I don't mean to, like.
No, it's okay.
I'm going to abuse that, but if we were, if you were to have a regularly scheduled board meeting, and your numbers rose, you know, drastically, then just, I think what you just said is not only, I could, I can add an emergency item to an agenda, less than 24 hours.
You could.
If it met that, if it met that criteria, just the same as you could add an emergency meeting, okay?
Now, the same, the same guidelines would apply. You want to add it as soon as possible to give the most notice possible. And you also want to state in the minutes the good cause for adding that item on with less than 24 hours' notice. But again, normally, in a given year, we don't have that many emergency situations, but this year, things are a little different.
Yeah, that's, it was just a what-if question.
Absolutely. No, you guys are doing great. I appreciate the questions. So I'm gonna get to a couple of simple examples here, and the more you guys can interact and, you know, give your thoughts, the more, the richer the discussion will be on these guys. And these will be the more straightforward ones, and then we'll get into the multi-step scenarios in a little bit. Did anybody have any other questions on what we covered so far, though, before we go into this? Okay. All right, first one. So you have a board member who's gonna be out of town during the meeting. Can the board members submit their vote in advance? What are your thoughts? And feel free to just shout out.
No.
I vote no.
Yeah.
Okay. Why would he, why do you say that?
Because it's not, it's not done in a transparent, open-meeting atmosphere. It's like, how did you arrive at that? I don't know, that would be my guess.
Yeah. John, I think that's right on the money. You know, a board member really can't submit a vote in advance or by proxy. And for the same reason that you said, it's, the public should be able to listen to the deliberation and not just the vote. And the board member, conversely, should be a part of that deliberation. All right, touching base. How do we touch base with our board members prior to a meeting? You just, hey, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're kind of on the same page with this issue that we're gonna discuss tonight, that kind of thing. Is that, is that allowed?
Like on a one-on-one basis, or are you talking about as a group?
Let's say one-on-one at first.
I, I think it's okay for board members to talk one-on-one if they have maybe a, just what I kind of get preliminary feel for something. I know as, as board president, sometimes I'll reach out before individually. I don't share what other people have said, but I'll just ask, hey, this is, thinking about adding this to the agenda or something like that.
Sure.
So I've done that.
I think if you don't ask how they're gonna vote, so you're not asking them to vote, you're just, what do you think are the things that we should think about with regard to this issue?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I think you're, I think you're right. For a one-on-one setting, that's probably very appropriate. I mean, we need to be able to have conversations. Now, what if we switched it a little bit and we said, touching base as a group prior to the meeting? What do you think there?
Good to meet you.
No. The only, I, maybe I should, the only thing I would say is like, the only kind of, again, it's touch base, but like, there would be times when I, I might send out something as an FYI and say, hey, guys, we're gonna have, I'm gonna ask you about available dates in the meeting. Make sure you look at your calendar, but not any kind of a back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would agree. So, um, if it's touching base as a group, it might still be a meeting, because remember, if it's within the policymaking duties of the board, then if you're having group discussion, then probably that's, that's going to be a meeting. Now, Deb, you mentioned something like sending out an email, hey, I'm going to be sending, you know, three or four dates, or, you know, we might have to look at rescheduling something. That's really an administrative matter. That's not within the policymaking duties of the board. Probably you're fine there. But I like the fact that you're saying, just have your calendars ready, and you're not encouraging the discussion right then and there. You're gonna say, wait, we're gonna discuss it at the meeting. I think that that's a very smart way of handling it. So notice, is it So notice, is it sufficient to post the meeting on an interior bulletin board at the central office and on the website and releasing it through socials? What do you guys think?
I, I don't think so for the interior bulletin board part.
Okay.
Because if the door is locked, we had, we had a situation like this where during COVID, when our buildings were locked, then obviously putting it inside to a place where they couldn't get to was not okay. So we, we thought that it needed to be an exterior door or something like that.
I think that's really smart, and I would agree with you. The only actual legal requirement is the posting to the district central administration office or another centralized office. And putting it on the exterior doors, I think, helps because then people have access to look at it at any time. And so I would say that that is the best practice. Again, posting it on your website and on social media is a fantastic addition. And I love seeing when districts do that because I think it just really adds an additional layer of transparency since people can pull that from the website or from social media at their convenience. But that's actually not part of the legal requirement. The only legal requirement is the, the physical posting at that centralized location. So I would agree, having it on an exterior door makes a difference.
How is media defined?
So, um.
Debbie, we're thinking that's why I asked you.
It's not actually defined. I, and I only am saying, I should let Shimon talk, never mind. We had to look this up. We had to see, yeah, we had to seek some.
I don't believe it's actually defined in chapter 21. So, um, that is, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it and see if there were separate decisions relating to what, what definition is put to media.
Yeah, we did some research and I think there was a common sense would indicate that media refers to somebody who works for a news agency or intending to share that information with the public, pass it along. So that's what, that's what we got, but.
But Deb, you're not an originalist and it was only newspaper and radio at the time that it was written?
No, yeah, no. Maybe so, yeah, yeah, sorry. So it's only, it's only a newspaper. Yeah.
So this next one, can you send some emails to connect as a board prior to the meeting? What are your thoughts?
I think you use trick words like connect and that makes it hard to.
They are trick words, but that's just it. Is that, we can sit here and read the Iowa code until we're blue in the face, and that's really nice and good. But when you actually try to apply it to situations, it doesn't, it's not always the easiest thing to do. This is why we're going through this right now.
I'd still say for like administrative things like prepping for a meeting, thinking about having a meeting, but not, not to connect as a board, as a group prior.
Anybody else?
It would become a meeting.
Yeah, and you know, so the Iowa Supreme Court hasn't directly weighed in on this, but they have alluded to weighing in on it if it continues to be something that, that comes out. And there's this idea of what's called like a walking forum or serial meetings. And that would be if a board is communicating extensively electronically at the same time. So within like a short timeframe, and it's all on a particular topic that's within the policymaking duties of the board, that could be really problematic and it could actually potentially be considered a meeting. So those strings of conversations, if it's done as a group and they're building on one another and it's in close time proximity, that's, that's looking more and more like a deliberation, okay, done by the majority of the boards. You want to be very conscientious of that. Again, doing an administrative, you know, hey, something's come up and we need to reschedule something. That's not really within the policymaking duties of the board. You're probably fine there for people to say, I'm available on this day or I'm not available on that day, but without discussing the actual topic of the meeting or the items that are going to be deliberated or acted on.
Shobhan?
Yeah.
It's not really related to prior to a meeting or something, but any recommendations for communication that comes in, and I can think of one last week, and I'm sure our board can too, from the community, from a patron to all of us. And we've agreed, our, our communication is going to go through either Lindsay, the superintendent, or Deb, the president. But the rest of us don't really know then what the response was. I mean, any suggestions there on how you kind of close the loop on questions or emails or communication that comes in from the community that's outside of a board meeting?
Yes, and I think what I will tell you is it's not inappropriate for, let's say your superintendent responds back to a member of the public that has a, that has an inquiry or a concern or something like that and addressed it to the board. Let's say you say, okay, we're gonna have the superintendent respond back, or we're gonna have Deb respond back, and they do. They could, after the fact, send their response to everyone as an FYI. What you don't want to happen is a larger discussion about the response or commentary about it, okay? Because again, this is deliberation versus I'm giving you an informational item for you to be aware of. But it does bring up kind of, it's a natural offshoot to this next slide, which is, please always remember that written correspondence is, it could, it could potentially be considered a public record depending on the nature of it. And that could include emails, it could be blogs, it could potentially be text messages. Okay, again, that ultimately is for your legal counsel to decide if someone were to submit a public records request of what would qualify under the request and what would not, but just be cognizant of that. Okay?
Yeah, that sense, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts there, but it seems like sometimes it's difficult to close the loop. You know, did somebody bond or how did we respond?
Right.
And I know that we want to respect the open meetings, but at the same time, it's, it's if it's addressed to us, whether as a group or, or subset of the group, it's, it's important that we do respond, right?
Yeah, and it could very well be something as simple as getting a confirmation from Lindsay saying this inquiry was responded to on this date. Just so you guys know, you can rest assured, okay, yep, it was handled or it was taken care of. Sending that, sending that as a group email would be very appropriate. Okay?
Yep, good.
Any other questions from some of the examples we've gone through? I'm going to move on to the scenarios, and these are going to be a little more involved. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put it up on the screen and give you guys a minute or two to read it. And then I'm going to ask you some questions about it, okay?
Feel free to ask the people who haven't spoken up yet.
All good until the commentary, it looks like.
And I just, I just now belatedly realized what I did here, because if you guys have people that are listening in, but they're not able to read this, they can't look at the screen right now, I kind of am depriving them. So I'm going to read it out loud really quick. So bear with me. A winter storm is expected to hit on Monday, the evening of the board meeting. The superintendent sends a group email asking each board member to reply whether Thursday would work as a day to reschedule the meeting. Each member replies all to say Thursday will work. Board member Miller also asks in his reply if the athletic director will be in attendance to discuss possibly sharing the football program with a neighboring district. This is an agenda item for the meeting. Board member Lucas replies all that he thinks sharing will feel like a loss of identity for the community. Okay, so that's the scenario. So let me ask you first, first things first. So how does everyone feel about the superintendent sending the group email asking each board member to reply whether Thursday will work to reschedule the meeting?
That's good.
Fine. Hey, Jeff.
Hey, Tyler.
I would agree. Yeah, I think that that's absolutely fine. It's appropriate. Again, we, we want you guys to be able to get the work done of the board, right? How about the board members each replying all?
No.
Feeling good, okay, about that?
No.
Who's saying no?
Jeff is saying no.
Jeff is saying no. Why, why do you say no, Jeff?
Because they always say never hit all on, on correspondence.
We do try to, we actually do try to do that, like ask, Lindsay will just ask to, each person to call or to respond back to them individually.
And I think that's a really good, safe practice. That is absolutely a great practice for your district. And.
I get in, I get into plenty of trouble without. I'm good.
I generally encourage districts to do the same thing, to avoid the reply all button for this very reason, because if you just get into the habit of not replying all for every response, then there really isn't, there's less likelihood that you'll, you know, accidentally hit it, okay, on a substantive issue. Now, how about board member Miller asking if the athletic director will be in attendance? What do you guys think?
I don't, I don't think that's bad.
You can't do that, yeah.
Oh, I don't think that's bad because I still think it's, I think it's just that they're just asking if somebody will be there for an item that's already on the agenda. I, I don't think it gets bad yet.
See, and this is the good part of having these discussions, because one of you is saying, oh, this probably isn't good. And the other one's saying, I can see why this would be fine. And again, this is where life is messy, right? There's a lot of gray area. And I would say that chances are good, you know, if you're not having a deliberation about the substance of the topic within the policymaking duties of the board, you're probably okay, but this is getting murky. This is starting to get murky, right? Because, and for the very reason why of the next sentence, because now you have another board member that says, hmm, I think this, you know, and then offers an opinion that sharing would be a loss of identity for the community. Okay, how do you feel about that last statement?
No, that's not appropriate.
Yeah, so, so we're seeing a spectrum of where we start innocently enough and, and then by the end of it, we think, hmm, this is really, this is making us cringe a little bit, right? Our chapter 21 radars are kind of going off the charts. This next one, electronic meetings, and I'll read this aloud as you guys read it. The agenda for Monday's board meeting states that the meeting will be electronic. It also lists a possible closed session pursuant to Iowa code, chapter 21.5J. At the meeting, the board approves entering closed session by a vote of three to two. The board members leave the open electronic meeting and enter the closed electronic meeting. The link to the open meeting is now closed. After deliberation, the board clicks on a new link to start a new open meeting. The open meeting resumes and additional business is handled and the meeting adjourns. All right, so what do we think about the agenda notice for the closed session?
I think that's right. You're supposed to. You're supposed to notify them of a closed session, just like, you know, you shouldn't. So I think that's, I think that's appropriate.
So it's a good start, and I'm going to kind of pick on, for a moment here, and see if Gail has any input on this one. Gail, do you mind weighing in on this?
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with that. This is, this is new because I'm cringing because we're going to an electronic meeting in a closed session. So this is a real new territory. So first of all, it needs to be, the vote needs to be a open vote and needs to be a individual vote.
Yep.
The closed session, I believe, from what I see, they have to come back into an open meeting. And the open meeting resumes and they have a new link. But my concern is the open meeting with the new link, does the public have the opportunity to join or to view the new link?
Yeah, this is great. And this is, this one's kind of complicated and I, why I put it in there. And Gail, I love that your, your natural intuition is kicking in here, and I think you're spot on. So let me look at a couple of things, okay? First things first, this possible closed session, we have down, we cite directly to the Iowa code section that this applies to, which is the purchase of real estate, okay? I'm pretty sure that's 21.5J. This, I'm saying this off the top of my head, which is always dangerous to do late in the evening. But what we don't have here is additional language listed in the agenda to describe what 21.5J says.
Yeah, true, that's the.
Really important. So when you're listing that on the agenda, you also want to just copy and paste the actual language for that subsection of the code directly into your agenda. Because then any member of the public can read it and understand what the topic is. Okay? So that one's key. So then the meeting, the board approves entering the closed session by a vote of three to two. You guys are a five-member board. Is that sufficient to enter closed session?
I don't know.
I usually look to, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know. I ask usually.
Yeah, this, this is a quirky little rule that not a lot of people are as aware of, but you need a two-thirds majority if all the members are in attendance in order to enter a closed session. Yep, and if one of your members is missing, you need it to be unanimous in order to enter closed session. And I will tell you that that little section of the Iowa code is one that's often missed by districts. It's because people just don't think of it. But yep, it's two-thirds majority if your whole board is there or unanimous if anyone's missing.
I think we've been lucky that it's always been unanimous, so.
Yeah.
That nature would be why? Because you wanted to do it in an open session?
I think that the reason, and, and again, I'm speculating here, but I think that the reason that the legislature required that in chapter 21 is because they want to err on the side of openness.
I see.
Yep, they want to make sure that this is something that the board feels confident should be a closed session. Good question, though. Um, so now we talked about, I'm going to touch on some of Gail's concerns about these two links, right? And this is absolutely new territory. There is not written case law about this because this is a construct of the emergency proclamations occurring right now in the pandemic. But so the board clicks on, they leave the open meeting and that link closes. And then after the closed session, they come on with a new link. That could work, but you'd really want to make sure that both links are posted on your agenda, right? Because that's a requirement right now is that, for accessibility, that your public be able to see both links to have access to the whole thing. What would be an alternate way to set up a closed session during an electronic meeting? Have you guys had to do one yet? Okay, so another way to do it would be, let's say you're using Zoom meetings, like, like we're using Zoom as a platform for this discussion. You could have your open meeting and the link to it. And then when it's time to go into closed session after the board has approved it, the board members leave the open meeting, but the open meeting stays running. Okay, then you guys can have your closed session, and when you're done, you rejoin that same meeting. So that way, your public doesn't have to do anything to click on a new link to, you know, to rejoin the meeting or anything like that. It's just a smoother transition. It's a little bit more accessible, I think. All right, last one. You guys have been so great bearing with me here. I know this has been kind of a longer discussion. So this is scenario three, our public forums. Next Monday's board meeting will include a discussion item on closing an elementary building, and this has created a public stir. Rather than using the typical rules for public forums that the district has, like three minutes to speak, up to 30 minutes total for the forum and using a sign-in sheet, the board decided to host a Q and A session during their meeting. Citizens can approach with a question and the board will try to answer it. There are no time limits. During the meeting, citizen Thomas asks, why are we talking about this when you voted last week to raise administrator salaries? I want to know why you did that. The board president explains why salaries were raised. So we'll start at the top. Okay, so we have, we have a really hot topic. Okay, so we have, we have a really hot topic, right, in the district? And, um, usually public forums go through a regular meeting and there are, are rules. And the board has decided to scrap that and host the Q and A session. Who feels comfortable with the Q and A session?
Not me. Is that a loaded question? Yeah, for a lot of reasons, not me, but I, I don't think that we do that typically with our board. I've usually just heard about that from, I like our administrators and superintendent and stuff, but.
Anybody else? I'm sorry.
Something like that. Um, I guess in the past, like when we've done some building projects and preparing for a bond, we've done a forum, but it's outside of a school board meeting. So Q and A and, you know, superintendent, board members there, but it's, it's, well, Gail could probably explain how we've set it up so we can all be there, but, but it allows for a Q and A. Board meeting and it's certainly a decision. A forum for making any decisions.
Absolutely.
This would be problematic. Q and A.
Yeah, and I'm guessing that that setup has worked really well for you in the past. Um, and I would agree that that's actually a really ideal setup. This key, this idea of a Q and A session during the meeting could potentially be valuable. It could potentially be problematic. And, um, I'm guessing that you guys are cringing on this one a little bit because for the same reasons of what I'm going to highlight. But with hosting a Q and A session during the meeting, you can get into some murky area here, um, if the board starts responding to citizen questions on a topic that isn't listed. Because you haven't provided advanced notice through your agenda that the board will be discussing or deliberating that topic. Okay, so that can be really problematic. And the other part that you want to just be aware of is the reason that, um, a lot of districts have some regulations for their public forums of, you know, time, uh, time restrictions and just the way it's going to be set up. You know, we'll do three minutes per speaker for up to 30 minutes or whatever you're going to use. Is because we know from Supreme Court's precedent that it's okay for the board to create this limited public forum and to regulate the time, place and manner. Just not the viewpoints. And so the reason we set up, um, those restrictions for public forums is to be able to honor the time of the board and to say, we're going to cap this at a definite time so that the board can keep going with the meeting, but we do want to hear from our public. Um, and this Q and A session doesn't have any of those restrictions. So you would want to be really careful and conscientious as a board that, um, people are getting fair time requirements because what you don't want to unintentionally do is, um, regulate how long people get to speak or what they get to contribute based upon their viewpoints. Because that's not allowed. Okay?
How do you make sure one side doesn't stack the deck that the whole, they get all signed up for the 30 minutes and you don't have the opener close in this instance to make sure you got balanced, uh, comments?
So I think that that is a really valid concern. I will say, um, in this scenario in the Q and A, the, the Q and A is problematic, right? Um, for a public forum, um, it really isn't the board's, um, isn't necessarily the responsibility of the board to endorse either viewpoint, popular or unpopular. In fact, the board wants to stay away from doing that. What you're doing is serving as, um, the recipient of the information in that situation. So, um, not commenting on any viewpoint, let's say you have 30 angry parents that have signed up to speak on a particular topic and nobody has signed up in favor of it. Then, then that's what, what your public forum consists of that evening.
Yeah, and in reality, we actually don't know, in a public forum, we don't know what they're going to present. The Q and A session, I guess, is the, maybe that's what I was thinking of, John, for that, but.
I've, I've seen, uh, political deals where they, they do every other one just so that they know that, that it's not everybody's in the same boat, so they just say, we gotta break it up so we hear both sides, but that's not likely in our instance anyway, so.
Yeah, like this summer, we didn't have, we had numerous, um, forums with our meetings and we weren't, we didn't know. We don't, we don't ask them for, to, to indicate what they plan to talk about, only that we give the standard kind of disclaimer for public forums that they're aware.
Yeah.
The board won't respond.
Very appropriate because, um, there really, it would be very hard to assert that you guys were unfairly discriminating against people based on their viewpoint if you don't even know what their viewpoint is.
Do you think like if you had the situation, like you had three minutes to speak, up to 30 minutes total? Let's say you had, um, 12 people sign up. Do you think at that point it's all right to, would you, you know, rather than just taking the last two off, or is it more important? You can't really adjust the time limit to fit everybody into three minutes, can you? You know what I mean?
That would be, um, up to the discretion of the board, but I will say that,
Probably shouldn't.
Again, you want to be careful of that. Usually when you set reasonable restrictions on the time, place and manner for public forums, you really kind of want to stick to them.
Got it.
Um, so what you can tell everybody is, I see that we have 12 people signed up and there's only 30 minutes. I hope that we can hear from all of you, but I just can't guarantee it. If you have something more to say and we can't get to you this evening, please, you're welcome to come back at our next, you know, the next time we host a public forum.
What if people choose to email? And something for public forum and you do have the amount of time, like it's not past your 30 minutes. Should you read the email? Should you just leave it? Is it part of the public record if anybody were to want it? What's like the best practice, you think, there?
I've heard districts, um, treat that in a couple of different ways. I would say the majority of districts tend to, if someone sends in submitted comments um, before a meeting, they take that as, you know, commentary to the board. Some is, same as like somebody emailing their concerns. And generally they'll have a practice in place where someone will respond back. To, to just let that person know, thank you so much, your comments have been received, or however you want, you know, you want to state it. Um, and the board is aware of your comments, but that's really it. Commenting on the substance of that, um, if they're, especially if they're submitting it for a public forum, unless you're giving advanced notice, that wouldn't be allowed under chapter 21.
Okay, even I, I was wondering even if you should read it out loud, but you shouldn't. That, that's not a requirement that you read them out loud.
It is.
They were submitted. Okay.
Yeah.
Shabon, you're okay with the fact like Tyler was talking about, we've done some things where we've had, uh, a public forum, more of an informational meeting type, uh, that would be handled maybe by myself and, uh, maybe some other administrators just to try to answer some of the questions that were there. Is that a, is that a way to handle some of these?
If you had a public forum with just administrators there?
They, they would be the ones that would be answering the questions, yes.
And the board is not, is not meeting. It's not listed as an open meeting.
Not, not listed as an open meeting.
Yeah, then I think that's very similar to like the Q and A session or about, you know, building a new field house or what have you. And I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Because you're not convening this governing body. Yep. But the board shouldn't be sitting there, you know, discussing and deliberating all in the back row together. What did you think about what the administrator said there? What do you think about, you know, what the, what the citizen said there? That can't be happening. If you want your board to attend and listen in, it should probably be separated just so that it's very transparent and very obvious to your community that they're not discussing among themselves.
Right, a lot of times what we've done is that's been like during a construction type of situation so that we make sure people have an opportunity, we're being very transparent, they have an opportunity to ask questions and we have an opportunity to answer.
Yep, absolutely. You guys have asked really good questions. Um, do you have any additional questions for me at this time?
Yeah, I do. When, when you, when you talked about the real estate piece, um, at what point can you go into closed session when you start talking about real estate? I mean, is it because you want to talk about anything in real estate or is it just the purchase of new land or moving a school or how does that work?
It should only be a discussion that would impact the purchase or sale price. So really that's the point at which you can. If you're talking about moving location or building a new school building or acquiring land to build a school building, but you haven't narrowed up down a specific location and you're ready to make an offer, then that should be, that should be conducted in the open. Any other questions?
We had a, we had an example that happened a couple of weeks ago after the, um, derecho and we, um, had some system issues in the middle of a meeting. And I think we have this all set up now. This was kind of one of those situations that was a, we just didn't see it coming kind of thing, but where we did have a link and then for some reason, let's say, system issues, we lose that link. Um, that's a situation where our new process would be, you know, obviously now we'll stop the meeting. Um, when we are aware that there's a technical issue or some other kind of issue. Um, and then we have listed on our agenda a place where we will communicate with the communities, uh, our community to say, okay, we're able to re, to figure it out. Here's our new link. Um, that would be a situation where the link wouldn't have been published. Does that make sense? But is that appropriate? Or do you think it's, at that situation, do we have to just stop the meeting? Does that example make sense?
Oops, somebody lost her.
Oh, I thought I got lost, sorry. She did. That's she didn't like it. That was a, apparently I asked a zinger and response, no.
Jason, the mic.
She's no longer listed as attending that I see.
Um, yep, we, we lost her, but we'll just, uh, stay online here and try to get her back.
Maybe we timed out. Is it time for an hour or something?
Gail, do you know what we had listed for a time on this?
I think we would have not been able to be meeting if the meeting timed out.
Right, if, it would have kicked us all out if it was timed out at two hour or an hour.
She's probably just checking her website to see if it's really there.
Yeah. I feel like this is a test, so I'm just going to hold tight.
Deb, we are going to give her a call and I also re-sent her the invite.
Okay.
Andrew's been kind of quiet too. I want to see if he's still with us.
Oh, John, I'm still here. Taking it all in.
There she is.
Oh, that might have been the greatest stroke of irony I've ever experienced.
We had, we just had an emergency. Yes, but we kept.
So sorry, guys.
That's all right. I thought, wow, I don't think that was a good question is what I thought.
My computer crashed.
Oh, wow.
And Deb, I, I don't know what kind of magic you worked there, but right as you were saying, if something happens and there's connectivity issues and then my
So did you, did you hear my question at all?
I don't know if I caught.
So all I said was, um, all I said is we have, uh, we had a situation where we had a technical issue, like after a storm, there's very kind of unstable internet. And so we, it became known to us in the meeting that we had lost our connection and so we know now, we have processes in place where if that were to happen and our link is lost, that we have listed in our agenda, this is a site where we will publish, oops, we had technical difficulty, here's the remainder. So when the link is stopped, we would stop our meeting and then, um, publish that information. Here's the new link that will work. Is that, does that go, that, that second link potentially would have not been in the posted agenda?
Right, yeah, it's, um, you know, it's interesting. So the short answer is there is no guidance from chapter 21 on that scenario. Um, and, you know, so then we have to go with, well, what, what makes practical sense? It sounds like you're doing everything you possibly can to, um, inform the public. Hey, we realized this occurred and we're going to try and, um, get, get it accessible again. Um, and so I think by you doing the best you possibly can to make it accessible, you're, you're probably going to be fine. Um, but I can't say with a certainty, this is how it will play out because all this is so new. We're just not exactly certain how it's going to play out sometimes.
Yeah, at the time, you know, we didn't, uh, we hadn't published on our agenda. This is where you go if you have technical difficulties. We simply, uh, notified during social meet, using social media because that was the, the quickest and the best thing we could think of, but
Yep.
You know, you learn, each meeting you learn and you hope that you're given a little grace.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So that, that was my only question. And I actually thought I was just using that as an example when I disconnected you from the meeting, so.
I don't think you did it. My whole computer shut down.
That's exactly what happened. That's what I was trying to tell you. That's exactly what happened to us. I don't, I don't have any other questions. I, I've been a board member for three years now and I'm telling you this was helpful to me. It's just a nice refresher, so I certainly appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely, yeah. It's my pleasure. And if you guys ever have questions going forward, please feel free to reach out to me. This is what I do. I'm happy to talk with board members.
Yeah, that's awesome. Anybody else maybe have any comments or for Shabon before we step up?
No, thank you very much, though.
My pleasure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
And these documents are on our, um, Dropbox, so, uh, as we have, maybe you want to go back and we could refresh sometime. That's, that's helpful too, so I appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely. If you ever need anything, touch base. And Lindsay, thank you so much for setting this up and for inviting me to come speak this evening.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, awesome. So I will, uh, all right. Second by Jeff Mosman. Of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys. Thanks, Jason. Thank you, Gail.